All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Welcome on over to you for the call to order, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, August 15th, 2023. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Present.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington? And announce Commissioner Willie is excused from today.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. I'm going to exercise Chair's prerogative and start with an announcement. Yes, indeed, it is very hot out there, and we are under not only a red flag warning, so please no open burning, but also a smog alert. So dangerous air, please limit your outdoor activities if you can. We want everyone to stay cool and stay safe. You can look at StayCoolWashingtonCounty.org or com. We have two no-turn-away 24/7 shelters that are open. One is located at 5250 Northeast Elam Young Parkway. That is right at the Hawthorne Farm Max stop. And the second is the Beaverton Community Center, right across the street from the Beaverton Library, and that is serviced by TriMet bus routes 52, 76, and 78. So please do not sleep at home in this dangerous heat. Please take advantage of these no-turn-away 24/7 shelters. In addition, there are at least eight emergency shelters, cooling shelters that are open, including local libraries and park recreation district facilities that are open during the early morning hours through the mid-evening hours. Please also check on your friends and neighbors. This is very dangerous weather and a dangerous time.
Chair, could I also include from all of us a thank you to the Washington County employees that are working through this time and being safe while they do so?
And our Clean Water Services employees. Unfortunately, the camera isn't...
There it is.
There we go. These are large water bottles that our Chief Executive Officer and HR of Clean Water Services, our Washington County-wide Surface Water and Waste Recovery Utility, has provided to all of our crew members who do work in this dangerous weather, whether it's hot or cold weather, to make sure that you have appropriate hydration. We also have that for our crews here in Washington County. And as Ms. Angie, our county administrative officer, informed us during our work session, at least one-third of our employees do work, vital work, outside servicing customers, whether it's for inspections, our road ops team, our sheriff's deputies, emergency management crews, you name it, they're working for our community. They're exposed to this tremendous heat and dangerous air. So everyone, please stay cool and be safe. All righty, we do have one change to our posted agenda from the original publication. We've pulled an item off of our consent agenda. That's item six. So next, we have our first public comment period. Clerk Moss, who do we have either in the room or online for us?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room. Would any members in the auditorium, which should provide a comment on any counter-related topic, for up to two minutes? Just raise your hand or come forward, not seeing one in the room. Would any member of the public viewing this meeting online via Zoom like to provide public comment on any counter-related topic for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise-hand function and also say we have a five-minute comment period at the end also. Not seeing any hands for this section, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we have our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of 11 items, two sets of minutes, three items from Clean Water Services, one item from fleet facilities and parks, one item from Health and Human Services, and four items from land use and transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously for to zero. Next, for Boards and Commissions. We have a roster of three individuals who have stepped forward to serve our community. So I would ask for a motion to appoint Robert Dessey, Vicky Green, and Jayanthi Raman as Washington County Community Representatives to the Regional Arts and Culture Council RAC.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously for to zero. Next, we're moving on to presentations. We have one presentation today from our wonderful Housing Services Team on the Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services Joint Quarterly Update. Welcome, team members. We really appreciate the work that you and all of the extended team members and partners do for our community. So we're excited to have you before us for this quarterly update. Please take it away.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jess Larson. I use she and her pronouns, and I'm your Assistant Director in the Department of Housing Services. We are very pleased to be here today with the quarterly update for the two voter-approved regional measures that our department is implementing for Washington County, the Affordable Housing Bond and the Supportive Housing Services measure. As we think you will see and hear in our agenda today, this work represents tremendous progress and growth in our system of services, both by way of housing and those wraparound supports that are creating stable housing options for our community. So we're thrilled to bring you these programmatic updates and really grateful to be leading this work. It's a privilege to be able to bring community outcomes at a time of such great need, and we're grateful for your leadership in championing this work. And well, let's get on with the show, I suppose. So the first bit of information will come by way of our colleague Andrew leading up the Affordable Housing Bond implementation. Then Ally and I together will give you some program highlights from the Supportive Housing Services measure, and we'll have time for feedback and questions from you at the end. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Andrew Crampton, Development Manager with Washington County. A few quick updates on active projects. We're really in full implementation mode with the Housing Bond measure. All but one funded project, or committed-funded project, is now either completed or under construction. The remaining project that was funded with our final remaining allocation, Woodland Hearth, is expected to close early next year and begin construction. They just received funding from the state for PSH, Permanent Supportive Housing, funding, so really well on the way and are in process with concept endorsement with Metro. So with that, that would be all of the projects under construction and allocated. The first project I want to highlight is Terrace Glen that was completed this year in June. Had a great opening celebration earlier this summer. They're really ramping up their lease-up. They're actually at 40% lease-up now, 58 units over a period just of a few months. Have heard really good feedback from members that have really been excited about the property and really beyond what they are expecting for affordable housing with the amount of community space and bedroom size, all the way up to four-bedroom units. So really great project, really active, and they're able to get the scale now to start community events at the building. So really excited about that project's progress. So now we're at four projects, 315 units that have been completed. All four projects have had Housing Authority partnership role or Housing Authority-led project and some dynamics. So really exciting that the Housing Authority, through both our nonprofit and our private developers too, have been able to take the lead. And then the next projects that will lease up will really be our nonprofit community leaders and community developers. The next one that will be completed is Alongside Apartments. This is the Tigerd Senior Housing, really named alongside with the idea that it's adjacent to the Tigerd Senior Center. That's about to be completed. We had a tour earlier this summer with community members that you can see from the picture. So that just shows you how quickly they're getting the skin on the building from that earlier tour. 58 units, it's an elevator-served building, serving seniors 62 years and older, and 23 project-paced vouchers, so quite a few deeply affordable units, including units that are reserved through our VASH Veterans Housing Program as well, through HUD designation. Another exciting project, Plaza Los Amigos out in Cornelius, partnership between Bienna Star and REIT CDC. This really shows you the scale of the project. It's the second-largest project and really a large-scale project adjacent to the Fred Meyer. That will be completed at the end of the year. And then Cedar Rising is also under construction rapidly. It will be substantially complete this fall. There is an industry issue with electrical panels that's really been delaying a lot of the projects. So that will likely, although substantially complete, will probably start lease-up early next year. They've done a renaming process. This was the Aloha Family Housing Project off of TV Highway and has been renamed to Cedar Rising. Pretty interesting process as far as how they approached this renaming, really taking a place-based approach, thinking of Cedar, which is indigenous to the area. And there are several that were really in proximity to the site. One thing I think that was really thoughtful is, in addition to thinking of the name, they worked with community members, both Spanish and Cantonese, and had a couple other different options that they decided not to go with because it didn't translate as well. So Cedar Rising really had a good translation and a good theme. And that will end my component.
Thank you, Andrew. So to get us started with the Supportive Housing Services portion of this report, as we've brought forward to your Board throughout the last two years, we are underway in building a system of care for our community. We had very limited resources designated to address the crisis of homelessness in Washington County prior to the voter-approved measure. And so with these new resources, step by step, we are building a strong foundation and an expansive program that can be responsive to all of the facets and complicated intersections of addressing homelessness in Washington County. So this is just a visual representation of all of the programs that have launched over the first two programmatic years and also that sense of we're starting to reach the full capacity of what the funding will fund on an ongoing basis and leveling out and improving and strengthening these programs that have been launched so far. So you'll hear more about that throughout our presentation today. Very quickly, here is a snapshot of what that scaling up means with boots on the ground in our community. So you can see the difference between our capacity in 2021, prior to the Supportive Housing Services measure, and our capacity at the end of our program year that just ended here in June 30th of 2023. So we have outreach workers and housing case managers beyond nearing 150 trained housing experts in our community when we had maybe a score or a few more in 2021. Similarly, with our shelter capacity, if we look at our year-round shelter capacity, we had less than 50 beds, and they were all dedicated for households who were in family units or youth. And so single individuals and couples were truly given bus tickets and encouraged to seek shelter in other counties because we did not have options year-round here in Washington County. Now, we are more than 400 beds deep, and we can be responsive on any given night to an emergency need for shelter. And most importantly, where people can find permanent refuge and stability is in our housing capacity. And here you can see through a multitude of programs. This isn't just one program. This is permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, and more, the significant scaling up of capacity that our system is sustaining now in 2023 and will continue to grow again in Year Three. So with more on the details from our programmatic updates over the last year and specifically in Quarter Four, I'll pass to my colleague Ally Alexander Sheridan, who has been leading up for the last two years our health and housing integration work. And because it is about integration, that spans the scope of all of our programming in homeless services.
Thank you, Jess. Good morning, Chair and Board of Commissioners. For the record, I'm Ally Alexander Sheridan. As Jess said, I'm on our homeless services team, and I'm our health and housing program coordinator. So I'm going to lead us off with an overview of some of our achievements and outcomes over the past program year, which is our Year Two of programming under the Supportive Housing Services measure. So a couple of things we'd like to highlight. You'll see that we have 626 households that were supported in achieving stable housing, stable permanent housing, I should say. And we're really excited about this because you may remember our original goal for Program Year Two was 500 households. So we've hit that target and beyond with these 626 households you see represented here. For our rapid rehousing program, which is a medium-term intervention, we set an ambitious goal for our second program year, which we didn't quite hit. Although we were able to house 213 households, we found that, consistent with our experience with our first housing case management program, that it takes time to scale up the capacity and hire service providers, and that's what you see reflected here. We have set ambitious goals for our third program year, and we feel really confident in our ability to meet them. And then last, you'll see 414 households supported with eviction prevention services. So this is a one-time or short-term infusion of funds for households that are experiencing or facing eviction. You may remember that our partnership with Community Action was supported in providing that eviction prevention through ARPA funds, and we've made a short-term investment to scale that this year, and we'll also be doing that as we head into our third program year. And we're also excited to be expanding this work with our partners at Centro Cultural to also provide eviction prevention in partnership with them. So you'll see here in summary, we have supported 1,243 Washington County households in becoming newly stable. So an overview of some of the work that's gotten underway in our fourth quarter of our second program year. Our partners with Family Promise of Tuolton Valley have officially acquired a shelter site with the help of Project Turnkey Funds. This site currently is operating at a 40-bed capacity, and over time will scale to its full potential of supporting 70 households at that site. We also have work with our Safe Rest Villages underway, and I want to take a second to thank the Board for your support with these projects and also all of the really meaningful community engagement you've done to support this work. The first is our site Cornelius. You'll see on the slide, it says it's opening at the end of August, but our updated timeline is that this site will actually open on September 5th, and we'll have 30 pods here. And our second site is in Aloha, and we'll expect to see that opening a bit later in the fall and October. And the last body of work we'd like to highlight here is our locally coordinated Command Center, or fondly referred to as the LC-3. And this is a result of the Governor's Executive Order to meaningfully address unsheltered homelessness across the state. A couple of quick highlights here. Our Highway 47 encampment has been closed. And I should note that this work is really strengthening our shelter systems and our outreach system work, but also has provided an opportunity to work closely with our city partners. So Highway 47 has been closed, and everyone that was at that site was offered shelter. Our staff had a by-name list and really worked through that to make sure the folks staying there were well-resourced as that encampment was closed. Next up, our staff will be focusing on sites in Tigerd and downtown Beaverton, and we'll be focusing our LC-3 efforts there. And this is a, this next slide is a quick preview of some of the work that is underway, but will continue to get underway as we head into, or as we're now in our program Year Three. The first is an expansion of our housing liaison program, and you'll remember that this was a pilot project in partnership with our Health and Human Services Department to embed housing liaison positions in existing programs and services. We've expanded that to include two new positions with our community correction partners, and we're also doubling that program to make investments in our shelter systems to really focus on moving folks through our shelter systems and into stable housing. The next program you see here is our Rapid Move-In Fund or Move-In Ready Fund, and this will provide one-time or short-term infusion of funds to households that are really able to maintain stable housing, but just need that one-time assistance to stabilize and make their way into housing. We also have a recuperative care program that's launching this next year that we're really excited about. This has also been an opportunity to expand our culturally-specific service network, and so our partner on this project will be Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Center. This will be embedded at one of our shelter sites, but we'll be setting aside capacity for folks that are discharging from hospitals or inpatient medical settings to move into shelter and stabilize. We're also looking forward to launching our Access Center Capital Funds. Our program staff are currently working to wrap up the process. You'll remember the seven capital awards we issued for shelter sites. And so once that work wraps up, we'll look to issuing funds for our access centers. And a quick note about these access centers. So they'll be geographically distributed sites that will be open seven days a week for folks experiencing homelessness or housing instability to come in, have access to showers, food, storage units, and also get connected into our homeless services system and make their way towards stable housing. And then the last thing I'll update you all on is our contracting and invoicing procedures. So we've done a lot of work to refine this. You may remember that we had challenges in our first two program years as we've scaled our work with getting payments out and moving contracts along, but we've made some process improvements, and we've also scaled our staff capacity. So we feel that we're in a really ready position to have this work well underway in our program Year Three. And with that, I'll pass it back to Jess.
Thanks, Ally. It's tremendous, the program scaling and work underway. I'm going to, if you don't mind, transition us into the numbers, the financials for the Supportive Housing Services measure. So similar to that earlier bar chart, I showed you the difference in the scale of capacity before Supportive Housing Services and now our budget for this fiscal year. It's tremendous. These programs are made possible by the resources approved by voters. And here you can see both the scaling up and also the diversifying of program types that we're able to offer now through these community resources. And the flow of funds and the expenditures of funds hasn't been a sort of smooth path. So we've got a bit of a story to tell and explain on how we're planning to invest what we are calling our carryover funds from Program Years One and Two. So this chart, just to orient you, you see in the blue bar what we plan to spend. In the green bar, and sorry, the blue bar was what we plan to spend based on forecasted revenue. The green bar is the actual revenue that was received that program year. And the red bar represents the actual expenditures that were achieved that year. So a couple of forces at play. The revenue has much exceeded expected forecasts, and expenditures have not met what our budget plans were, but that was because program providers were hiring staff and housing people and couldn't fully utilize their budgeted amounts for their programs, though they will be as those staff positions are filled and households are housed. So looking forward, we have our largest budget yet for the program year. We actually are expecting more modest revenue, but we will see. That's why the green and red bars are hashed. This is a TBD indication. And we aren't sure that we're going to expend our full budget in the year. That will depend on lots of factors of timeliness and program scaling. So more to come, though what we are anticipating, again, is that leveling out of our system and our capacity and stabilizing both in revenue and in expenditures. But we first need to talk about what to do with these carryover funds. And I'm pleased to share with you all today that we have a strong plan already well underway. But those carryover funds represent the difference between the actual revenue received and the actual expenditures from the first two program years. After discussing with our advisory body and staying consistent with our local implementation plan, we have brought forward this recommended investment strategy of four different purposes, if you will, for investing these one-time or carryover funds. First, there's the critical built infrastructure that is needed to stand up a lot of this program capacity. Right now, we're relying heavily on market-based housing supply, but as we all know and as best practices indicate, permanent supportive housing works best in a site-designed program where the resources are on-site and households aren't scattered throughout the community. So investing in permanent supportive housing, and specifically a hotel acquisition, is a very important component of our programmatic plan and an important use of these carryover funds. Similarly, shelters, we've already begun utilizing some of these carryover investments in those shelters and will continue to do so. We've also made a commitment to our colleagues in Health and Human Services for the CAT project, the Center for Addiction, Triage, and Treatment. We want to make sure that there are strong housing and supportive housing connections on-site and integrated into that programmatic work and the access centers, as Ally was earlier describing. Then we also look to our systems infrastructure. That's the ability of our partners, our network, to be stable and strong in implementing the programs we've asked them to scale up. We've launched capacity-building grants of up to $200,000 for each of our 25 or so organizations that are partnered with us. So they are first doing a needs assessment with a funded technical assistant grant. And then through that needs assessment, they will present to our department a plan for those, that $200,000 grant to invest in the long-term stability and capacity-building needs of their organization so that they continue to do this good work with us and partnership with us. Also, looking upstream, the measure is designed to address homelessness and specifically chronic homelessness. But with these carryover funds, we can increase capacity that prevents households from falling into homelessness in the first place. It's not a long-term intention of the plan, but it is a strong short-term intervention. So we'll be scaling up those interventions as well. And then, of course, as you know, the revenue source is not necessarily a very stable revenue source. It is prone to be reactive to the ways of the economy. And so we need to make sure that every house, every case manager that gets hired and every household that gets housed will be able to keep their job and keep their housing, and that's through program reserves. So here's how that investment strategy looks in a pie chart. And as you can see, these are estimated amounts that will continue to be responsive to opportunities that present themselves and needs in our community and the adjustments that are made in the actual revenues and expenditures that are achieved. So we'll keep bringing this plan and update back to your Board for your awareness and feedback. But this is where we're at in planning our carryover investments as it stands, and that is the full sum of our current carryover. So we have fully allocated what we currently have in store through these carryover funds from Programs Year One and Two. All right, so I think that's the end of our presentation. We look forward to your questions and your feedback on this tremendous programmatic work from our Quarter Four, but also the plans and strategies underway for continued work in both the Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services. Thank you.
Thank you, team. Commissioners, comments, questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Well, first of all, I just want to say congratulations to you and the work that you've done. It's really remarkable, and I'm so very proud of where Washington County is. I'd like to go back to the last slide that you presented with the pie chart of the carryover investment and plan there. Is there fluidity there as well? If there are opportunities that present themselves in different areas here on your list? We're not tied to that, this investment plan, correct?
This is an important question. It's a complicated answer. In some ways, yes, absolutely, there's fluidity because we're always adjusting based on actual revenue received and actual expenditures. actual revenue received and actual expenditures. And also, project costs change over time. Though what we need to ensure is that whatever, especially capital investments that are being committed to, we have the abilities to ensure the programmatic operations of that capital investment. So for example, right now with our shelter capital investments, we think we are maxing out a long-term budget for the ongoing operations of those shelters. This is something that, again, will need to get addressed, or sorry, reevaluated year over year, but at this time, we would not recommend further shelter expansion, because we need to make sure we can afford the operations of all of that shelter with the 80 million, roughly, budgeted program that we can count on. So it's a, it's a yes-and answer for you, Commissioner.
And I appreciate that, and it's very important to make sure in, in all situations that we have the ongoing funds to support them, so thank you for that answer.
Commissioner Fai or Commissioner Rogers? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I have a, just three small questions. I, I do agree, congratulations, this is a great presentation. When the materials came out, I was comparing to my own notes, my own little cheat sheet that I have around some of the numbers, because I think they're compelling and they do tell the story itself, rather than us narrating. I think it's very, we have good data. And some of that numbers was around the rapid rehousing, so I'm just doing a sort of a checkpoint for myself and some of the information that we previously published. So when we did the presentation or the discussion around the time, place, and manner ordinance, there was a really great slide around some of the data around supportive housing services and how that measure is really helping. I can't wait, the stories we will tell 10 years from now when we have to refile this measure. But rapid rehousing was 443. That was the number that was then published, which wasn't long ago. And then today, there was a 200, and I forget, Slide 8 was rapid rehousing, but could you clarify those two numbers for me?
Absolutely, and apologies, the data is complicated. We tell, we provide data sometimes based on the capacity of our system, and then also sometimes on actual households placed into that capacity. So the data-
In this one year?
Yes, precisely. Thank you, Chair. The data of 200 and rough, some households provided for you in this report reflects the SHS-funded households placed in this year into our housing capacity for rapid rehousing. But in fact, rapid rehousing capacity includes also programming funded through the continuum of care grants. So when we are providing updates on our system capacity, we include that capacity already in place, plus this growing capacity underway through the supportive housing services measure.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thanks for that clarification. The other question I had was, I think of the slide before here, this one you're on, or you can stay with here too, but-
The ones with the four themes?
This one, yeah. Or you could have stayed in that pie chart too, but I was wondering about the eviction prevention. I appreciate this, and I do agree with you, this is the upstream prevention of chronic homelessness. Could you expand what's in rent, is this rent assistance?
Yes, well, thank you, Commissioner. Rent assistance comes in many forms. We, we provide as a department ongoing month-over-month rent assistance for households who extremely low income and would otherwise not be able to afford their rent on the market, and so we pay a portion through our vouchers. We have a variety of vouchers our department implements or provides. So that is also called rent assistance. In this case, this is eviction prevention for households who may or may not have a voucher, but have had some interruption in their income or some incident that has resulted in an eviction notice. They haven't paid their rent, and in order to avoid falling into homelessness, they need one-time rent assistance to keep, to pay their landlord and keep up with their monthly rent payments. So eviction prevention particularly is for housed households who need one-time infusion of resources for their rent.
To qualify this, you would have to have eviction notice be served.
I believe that that is the case for our eviction prevention programs, that an eviction notice is required, though that is not the only kind of rent assistance that our myriad of, of housing programs provides.
Thank you. And Chair, to wrap up my questions, the last question I have was within this slide around the technical assistance. Could you expand on that part?
Absolutely. So there's a, there's a variety of technical assistance components kind of noted here in the system infrastructure investment plan. First, we've granted each organization $30,000 grant to acquire, to hire a consultant to do an analysis of their organizational needs and then come back and make a request for further granting funds to address those needs. So that's one step of technical assistance, but there are more. We are also bringing on financial technical assistance to support our providers in building out their financial procedures. We also have technical assistance that's supporting our own programmatic development and growth as the department implementing these programs. So there's a variety of one-time, if you will, investments going into helping all of us build out this infrastructure.
Thank you so much. Those are my questions I had, Chair Harrington, and the last comment is Andrew's great presentation as well as you. The comment I had was the Cedar Rising. I did, that did resonate with me, and that's the building we toured, Chair Harrington and myself, in a hot summer day. So I, and I live right, usually grab pizza right there. I won't name names, but it's coming along. It's so amazing, the production of housing that's happening in Washington County, and the narrative that's out there, and how quickly we're putting buildings up. So I'm just very amazed how quickly that building is coming along, and I'm excited to see people in there soon.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Mr. Rogers, anything?
Not really, I think it's all been said, but what's, I think stunning is the rapidness of the building, as I mentioned previously. The public, when they vote for funds, they expect some performance, and we've been exceeding performance. That's always a good sign, and I listen to other reports from other counties, and I don't like to compare, because they have their own challenges and uniqueness, but we seem to be giving the public value and their money's worth. If we can say that and continue to say that, and we can say that a year from now and two years from now, then we've really done a great job, so thanks for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner, we agree.
Well, thank you very much for this great presentation, both for the Affordable Housing Bond and for the Supportive Housing Services Measure. I really appreciated seeing the four themes for the carryover investments. Thank you, and we can take the presentation down. I'm really excited about this idea of that access centers, so really great job there in, you know, providing that welcoming front door and helping to get people connected. Also, team's done a great job of looking at how, what have been the challenges with regard to contracting and invoicing. I am impressed by the information in both of the quarterly reports for both programs, and you did a nice job explaining how building up the system has also required that the many, the myriad of partners who have stepped forward, secured these contracts, have built up their teams, and meeting all of the requirements needed, all of the data as part of that invoicing, really challenging our, our own system of contracting, which has frankly, unfortunately become a bit out of date. And all of that goes towards the intentionality for both of these voter-approved member, measures to ensure that there's been accountability. We made a commitment to the voters, the voters said yes to that commitment, and we're following through. And I know how challenging it has been for our teams here at Washington County in, working in collaboration with all of our partners to reach this many success points along the way. And I know just this summer, our own team has been interviewing new employees to build up our own works or workforce, and that takes time and energy, but I am grateful for how the team has continued to invest in our, our systems so that we can better serve our community. So thank you very much. Thank you for putting all of this information together. I'm really impressed in seeing the concise information you provide in the quarterly reports, but also for the Supportive Housing Services Measure, tables and tables and tables of data, which for someone like me who really likes data, I really have to ask myself, and will be following through and asking the Oversight Committee, is this, how does the usefulness of this information play out for the committee? And have we right-sized it? And we may learn from that, that, you know, we really did push ourselves to be highly accountable, but they're the ones, as the Oversight Committee, to really evaluate if we maybe overshot that. So anyway, I'll follow up on that. So thank you very much. Keep up the great work. It is making a huge difference in people's lives, and I think that is one of the most important things that we can do in our public service. Thank you. Next, we're moving on to the category of public hearings. We have four of them today. The first one is to consider the annexation of two tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately 28 acres to Clean Water Services. And we'll start off with a brief presentation. Please, take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brian Robb, and I'll be giving a brief presentation on proposed boundary changes 23-003 and 23-004, which are requests annexed to tax lots and right-of-way into CWS and THPRD. And although this, these will require two separate hearings, I'm combining the presentations for brevity, and we can skip the attachment in the next hearing. First, a map, the properties are located in the southeast portion of the county, in the South Cooper Mountain Community Plan area of Beaverton. The subject properties are approximately 28 acres in size and are shown here in the dark gray, and they're located on the west side of Southwest 175th Avenue, and this is just north of Mountainside High School, if that gives you a frame of reference. The lighter gray area shows the current extent of the Clean Water Services Boundary. And just another map for the second annexation showing the current extent of the THPRD Boundary as well. These proposals are requests from THNC Oregon LLC, and as previously mentioned, the request for two, is for two tax lots and right-of-way to be annexed into CWS and THPRD. These requests were initiated by a petition from the property owner as well as registered voters through a double-majority annexation method. So the annexation meets all substantive criteria as outlined in the staff report. If approved, the annexations would become effective immediately. So staff recommends that the board conduct both public hearings, and at the conclusion of the hearings, adopt the resolutions and orders approving the annexations into CWS and THPRD. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and can answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
One question.
Sure.
How close is this to the Beaverton city boundary?
It's within the city of Beaverton.
It is all within the city.
That's right.
We have irregular boundaries down there.
It do, that South Cooper Mountain kind of curves out.
Has it been annexed to the city of Beaverton?
It has.
Okay. And the city of Beaverton does not object at all to going into the Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District?
No, THPRD covers all of the city of Beaverton.
Yes.
The reason I ask that is I know some cities are trying to become a full-service city, and I didn't know it.
Right, as part of the, as part of this process, we require a, an endorsement by the city as well as from the district. Yep.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Neither of these two items? Okay, could we re-display that prior slide, please?
Yes.
So at this juncture, I'd like to open the public hearing on case file 23-003, the annexation for Clean Water Services. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Would any member in the auditorium like to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff presentation, not seeing anyone coming forward or raising hands. Would any member viewing this meeting online via Zoom like to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation for up to two minutes, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and with that, I would like to close the public hearing and ask for the motion to adopt and authorize the chair to sign the resolution and order approving the service district annexation 23-003 LRP slash BC with the annexation becoming effective immediately for the subject properties into Clean Water Services.
Second.
All those, yes, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to case file 23-004 to THPRD as previously covered in our presentation. I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Again, I did not see anyone sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide public comment for two minutes up to this public hearing? As you heard the presentation from staff, not seeing anyone coming forward or raising hands. Would anyone online via Zoom like to provide public comment? As you've heard this presentation, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to proceed with the annexation of the subject property into the Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District, adopting and authorizing the chair to sign the resolution and order approving service district annexation 23-004 LRP slash BC with the annexation becoming effective immediately.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to our third public hearing item. Thank you, Mr. Robb. And joining us today is Greg Wyman, our Real Estate and Planning Program Manager. So please, staff presentation.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Wyman. I'm the Real Estate Planning and Program Manager under the Facilities and Parks Department. Today's public hearing seeks consent to transfer county ownership, owner, surplus property to the city of Twalton for dedication to right-of-way. The property is located at the intersection of Southwest Boones Ferry Road and Southwest Warm Springs Road and is located within the city of Twalton limits. It is a .02 acres acquired by county through a 1985 tax foreclosure process. This stripped property abuts Southwest Boones Ferry Road and is part of the city of Twalton's current road improvement project along Boones Ferry. Staff recommends the transfer of this property to the city of Twalton for dedication to right-of-way. And with that, I would ask if there's any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Nope. Seeing none, with that, I would like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room. Would any members in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on this public hearing item? As you've heard the presentation from staff, not seeing anyone coming forward or raising hands. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard- As you've heard the presentation from staff, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Madam Chair.
And with that, I would like to close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the transfer of county-owned property with tax lot 2S124CB02700 to the city of Twalton and authorize the board chair or their designee to execute all documents.
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving this motion, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Next, our fourth planning, our public hearing item is an ordinance. So, with this, we need to first, I need to first ask for a motion to read ordinance 898 by title only. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Mr. Carr.
Order number 898, codifying the motion for the government to adopt the office. 6-6599-39 and 10-115.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. And with this, I would ask if you have a staff report.
I do. Thank you very much, Chair Harrington. This is something that the board considered at last week's work session, but I will go over the details for the public. There are five resolutions and orders that govern the county council's office. You'll see them listed there. They cover things such as the responsibilities of the council, county council, the personal, the retention of outside counsel, legal representation of employees, conflict waiver, and authority to initiate litigation. These are, been adopted between 1987 and 2010. Some of them are somewhat out of date. So, I, the purpose of this agenda item is to codify these into the Washington County Code and to repeal the existing and to update some of the provisions since they are somewhat out of date. I will go over each one of these resolutions and orders separately and note the changes. Resolution Order 8749, which was adopted in 1987, it provides generally for the responsibilities of the county council. It will be codified in Washington County Code Section 2.05.010. We added a subsection A. We proposed adding a subsection A, requiring the board to appoint a county council. Currently in the code, there is no provision for the board to do so, although the practice has been for the board to do so for some years. We add a subsection C3, requirement the county council office draft all resolutions and orders, which is the current practice, but this will put it into the code. And then it is subsection F, again, codifying the current practice, the county council's review will be held in executive session. Resolution Order Number 89-33, adopted in 1989, it will be proposed to be codified as section, Washington County Code Section 2.05.030. This provides for retention of outside counsel. The only substantive change that we're making, the only change we're proposing is that the contracts will be required to comply with county procurement rules. This is important. We, we generally, when we retain outside counsel, they will propose a retention agreement, which is more favorable to them. We always insist that they use the county's agreement, which is of course more favorable to the county. We also seek to increase the amount for authorization from $25,000 to $300,000, which is the current authorization limit for all contracts in the county, not requiring prior board approval. Resolution Order Number 99-39, which is of course adopted in 1999. This is conflict waiver policy. We recommend changing the authorization from the county administrator to the county council, since these are legal issues. We updated in subsection D, the legal code of ethics since, has been changed entirely since 1999. So, we reference now the new code rather than the old code. And in subsection E, we require, we remove, propose removing the requirement for board approval of each waiver. Resolution Order 10-115, authority to initiate litigation, will be codified as Section 2.05.020. The, only two changes there are, provide specific authorizations to collect county taxes and initiate condemnation actions and raise the amount of authorization without board approval from $75,000 to $100,000. And then in subsection B, we raise the amount from $5,000 to $50,000. So, the board consideration, the board had a work session, first reading on August 1st and a second reading today in public hearing, of course. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Commissioners, do you have any remaining questions for today?
I have, I have a comment. And, thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you for bringing these, these forward and bringing us up to speed prior to your departure. I really do appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Would there be any interest in moving this out for a month so that your successor can take credit?
Sure.
No, I'm teasing.
I'm happy to do that.
You've worked so hard. No, I'm teasing.
Commissioner Fai, anything?
No.
Okay. Well, I too want to thank you not only for your years of service and I wish you well and hopeful success in your second attempt at retirement. We have every faith and confidence in you in that. But I also appreciate your working to make sure that all of these procedures are up to date and efficient for this agency in service to the community. So, with that, I would like to open the public hearing for ordinance 898. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone, see anyone sign up. Would any member in the room like to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from our county council, give you just a moment to stand up, raise your hand. Not seeing anyone coming forward. Would any member viewing this meeting online via Zoom wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation from our county council, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt ordinance 898, codifying resolutions and orders governing the county council's office and repealing resolutions and orders number 87-49, 89-33, 96-65, 99-39, and 10-115. So moved?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Fai?
Yes.
Commissioner Treese?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington.
Yes. Thank you. We have one more action item. I expect it to be short, then we'll move on. But just a heads up, our business meeting will be ending early and I expect we'll be able to move to executive session early just after this meeting. So, do you need to, want to step away for a drink of water?
No.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, we'll move on to our action item, to create a forest land classification committee pursuant to ORS 52.310 and authorize the chair to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Forestry. And with that, we have our subject matter experts before us today. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thank you, members of the committee. My name is Mike Cafarota. I'm the district forester for the Oregon Department of Forestry. With me is Eric Perkins. Now, Eric is my local initial attack manager, so he manages our protection unit, does initial attack. I also say, though, he's also incident commander on one of our three statewide fire teams. So, I think he probably qualifies as an expert in this, in this scenario. Thanks for joining.
Well, and we're gratefully able to join us today versus needing to be out in the field managing active fires. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, I hope we can be as efficient as your last three or four items. That was an impressive piece of work. So, we'll see what we can do. Okay, so, we're here today. All right, here we go. Our goals today really provide you some background, also for the members of the public, on forest classification and really to seek approval of a resolution and order establishing a Washington County Forest Classification Committee. That's kind of a mouthful. And so, this, this process, this forest classification process, we've been working on this in Washington County for a couple of years now to get to this point. And we've been working across the state to do this in every county. And the reason this is necessary is that Oregon law requires forest landowners to provide for fire protection. And that's a standard Oregon law in Oregon, wildland fire is considered a nuisance and every forest landowner is required to take part in that system and we will abate that nuisance. But how we fund that is paid for by a forest patrol assessment fee. And that fee is assessed on landowners that have forest land inside of district boundaries. And this process is how we determine who pays that fee, by identifying that forest land. This has been going on for a long time. I think we've talked about this a couple of different times, but we've been providing fire protection since the 30s and a long history of, before that, it was done by private landowners and it turned over to the state in the 30s in this area. And so, now it's really cooperative effort. Private landowners pay the fees and they also oversee our budget and help decide on the level of, of protection that they want. How many engines, how many porta tanks, how many pumps, how many chainsaws, that kind of, that kind of work, really. There is one more piece, though, besides identifying forest land. It's also a platform to review the district boundaries. And Washington County has kind of a complex history around how the boundaries got set. There are some issues with the boundaries and it would be a good chance for us to look at those and see if we want to move those boundaries. And the first step would be classification, where we talk about where it's needed. And the second step would be, do we want to move the boundaries? I'm not sure how that would go, so I, I don't have an answer. I think it's, that's a public conversation. So, here's an example. The blue line on the map there is the protection boundary. So, that was set in the 30s where they said people inside the blue boundaries, where they have kind of a hatching color there, either gray or red. Inside the boundaries were needing forest protection and they pay into the system. And then outside the boundaries, that's still Washington County, but that is not considered forest land. And I really think that was probably sheep grazing in the 20s and they didn't want forest protection. That's my personal view of what happened there. It's kind of been lost in the history of time. And so, the fundamental problem is that inside the blue boundaries, you see some there are grayed out. Those are paying into the system and the red properties are not paying into the system. And probably lost was when they were subdivided in the 70s and for some reason, it didn't get attached to those red properties. And so, they've been receiving fire protection services from the Oregon Department of Forestry, but they have not been paying into the system. And so, essentially, what we do is we form a committee. The committee reviews all those properties and asks, are they part of the system? Do they either benefit from the Department of Forestry stopping wildland fire, moving towards them from, let's say, a lightning strike on the hill? Or do they contribute to the risk? And if someone drops a birthday cake for, on August 16th, and we have to come put it out? So, they have a, a share in that. So, so essentially, we appoint the committee. Committee will look across the landscape and look at all those properties and decide which ones really qualify as forest lands and should pay. And then we add them to the tax rolls.
For context on that photo, that's Hag Lake, the, the water mass there in the middle and Gales Peak Ridge there to the, to the right.
Here's another part of the county. This is up along Highway 26, I think. I should have looked that up again. And you see some of the border properties where we get fires are, are in red and the other ones are in gray. And when you zoom out and look at the whole county, you can see that, that most of the county is paying into the system. There's just a smattering of properties that need to be reviewed to see if they meet the definition of forest land. There's an important connection to the county here, which is the county assessor, that we would work in close partnership with them. And essentially, the committee does the work and we staff that committee. And when we get done, we take that information to the assessor and they put it on the annual tax rolls. So, that's an important connection for them and we, we want to work closely together, make sure there's no surprises and we give the format that works and, and record it correctly with the county tax assessor. Okay, I think just for context around what is considered forest land and it's not just has trees, I think that's, the name of it leads people to that conclusion, but really it's what spreads fire. So, it's any woodland, brushland, timberland, grazing land, clearing that at any time of the year contains growth, such that it can spread wildland fire. And in Washington County, that really is within our boundaries, most of the county. There's a few properties like this one in Dairy Creek that, that there's room for discussion about, is this really ag land with sprinklers and, and not a risk? And, but there's really very few, so we, we think it's a pretty straightforward process. When you go outside of our district boundaries, like the Chehalim Hills, you know, that's a question of whether that's forest land and should have wildland fire protection from the department or whether real fire protection is enough. And I think that's a, that'll be a good conversation for the committee and for the Now, like I said, we're working through the state doing this process and we finished Yamhill County. You know, for my area of responsibility, I need to finish Washington County and then Columbia County. And we do refresh it. And so, our hope would be to form this committee and the committee will meet once a year and do a little bit of work every year, so we don't fall behind. And in Yamhill County, we've instituted that. We just had our five-year review and completed that and we are scheduled to meet essentially next spring to see if anything has changed in Yamhill County. And we're about to start these same conversations in Columbia County to do the full review in Columbia County. Our public hearings are not as fast and easy as yours when we're adding people to the, to the rolls for this. Okay, so the history here, we had a work session in 2019 and then there was some questions there about what happens if somebody appeals. And we have worked on intergovernmental agreement with your counsel, Mr. Carr. We've reached agreement on that. We think it's not a big deal and we have a proposed intergovernmental agreement around that. We had a work session on August 1st. Thank you for letting me virtual for that and asked me to bring those forward to you Okay. And with that, I think I would leave it to you to decide by the former classification committee.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this proposal?
Chair Harrington, I have a one question. One of the slides that had entire counties, just for my own clarifications, one, the other one.
The one with all of Oregon's counties.
Oh, yes. Let's see, did I go wrong way?
Thank you.
This one, this one. So, the pink ones are the ones that have current forest land classification.
The pink ones have not been done recently. So, they all went through it probably in the 40s. And then, the green ones have relatively recent, kind of, I can see one that says 2019, one that says 2022. They, they asked all of them, myself and all my coworkers, to conduct this process in all of our counties. And at various rates, we've worked through them. So, Lynn County, my coworker Steve Wilson in North Cascade, he needs to do Lynn County and Clackamas County. And so, we're, the pink ones need to be done still.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or remarks?
My only remark is I, on August 1st, I said I preferred the other alternative, I still do. But a majority of my colleagues are voting in favor. I will too.
Thank you.
I'll just comment that I'm pleased for us to try this method and really seek the engagement of our property owners throughout the county where these updates need to occur. We take our role seriously for, and appreciate your partnership in seeking applications and appointing that committee and providing our services in addition to yours, so that folks know of this opportunity and that we can support your meeting dynamics, so that all of the process is open and transparent. And as you noted, public hearings to add property to a tax roll always tends to be an active process because in the end, we're talking about money. But as your presentation highlighted, there are those red areas that have been receiving services without paying for that very same level of service. And we need to make sure that we have a system in place for updating these and for being fair, open, and transparent. And I also want to compliment you for having the definition of the forest land available and noting that it is determined, defined by Oregon State Statute ORS 526.005, Section 6, Subsections A and B. So, with that, I would ask my colleagues to
So with that, I would ask my colleagues to make a motion to approve the attached resolution and order creating a forest classification committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero, and thank you for joining us today. Really appreciate it. And keep up the good work. Be safe out there.
Okay, thank you, and obviously, you're welcome at all the meetings, and we'll keep you informed all the way, and we'll just do this together, and it'll be straightforward.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. All right. Now that brings us to our second public comment period of the day. This is an opportunity for members of our community to address the board for up to five minutes a person. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We did not have anyone in the room. Would anyone in the room like to provide any public comment for five minutes on any counter-related topic? Not seeing one come forward, raise hands. We'll move to our online, and we'll start with Addie Smith. Addie, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Give me just one second. I'm sorry. I've been waiting all this time, and I was going over my notes, so give me just one moment. I apologize.
Ms. Smith, we do need to move on with our business. Could you start, please?
Yes, my apologies. I was, I am recording this meeting myself, and I apologize. So my name is Addie Smith. Today, I'm speaking before the Washington County Commissioners in Washington County, Oregon. This county is part of the Portland metropolitan area. Washington County is a sundowntown. There are no people on the board who represent the black and brown constituents in the county. The county is nearly eighty percent white and one-point-eight percent black. There are two justice systems in Washington County, one for blacks and one for whites. Black people aren't safe in Oregon. The solution isn't to move, the solution is change. The current members of the board have refused to make changes that hold their colleagues accountable for violating the law. For example, Chief Judge Kathleen Proctor and her fellow judges, Thompson, Bailey, and especially Minchaka and Boucher, are bigots. These judges violate the laws of the state and federal government with a perverse fervor. Black people don't stand a chance before them. For example, Jalen Smith was never served for court. He did not receive notification of a hearing. I have video that I have provided to the board of Hillsboro Police coming to his door, seeing the ring video doorbell, and turning away. Jalen and his girlfriend had their door broken down, and AR fifteens pointed at their heads at five in the morning by vicious and racist police officers, because Hillsboro Police and others lied about serving Jalen for court. Upon his arrest, he wasn't provided a bond by the aforementioned judges that he could afford. He wasn't provided an attorney for seven months. His rights to a sweetie trial were violated, and when he finally got an attorney, that attorney wasn't given time to prepare for trial. Jalen never got to tell his side of the story. A young black man, Morehouse graduate, had never been in trouble with the law, took a plea deal, took a plea deal because Judge Boucher, a white supremacist bigot on the Washington County Circuit Court, refused to grant Jalen a release while the attorney prepared for trial. But now let's look at Chief Judge Kathleen Proctor's colleague, a white fellow judge named Michael Mann, who was watching child porn. Not child porn, he was watching children as young as four years old be raped by grown men on his work computer. Administrative law Judge Michael Mann was arrested at the Washington County Circuit Court where he worked. Judge Proctor initially released him on his own recognizance. When the local media reported it, she asked him to come back to the court and post a two-thousand-dollar bond, clearly a bond he could afford, not the same luxury granted to Jalen. Jalen didn't watch any child porn. A jealous, lying ex-girlfriend called police, Hillsboro Police, and told them that Jalen had hit her. He actually had never touched her. She was angry because he wouldn't let her back into his home in his name. Administrative law Judge Michael Mann was allowed to sit at home and watch all the child porn he wanted whilst he awaited trial, thanks to Judge Kathleen Proctor. Jalen, a black man, never got to tell about how his lying ex-girlfriend had lied to police and the court. It is time for change. It is also time to remove people like Tanya Angie from office. When bad apples support bad apples, the entire tree is rotten. Jalen was mistreated during his short stay at the CCC by the bigoted staff there, and Tanya Angie did nothing. The fake investigation conducted by her staff only shows how far they will go to protect their jobs. The best way to protect their jobs is by holding themselves accountable and admit what they've done wrong and actually correct it. There's not enough national media attention shining a spotlight on the systemic and structural racism happening in Washington County. For every nicety and procedure displayed at today's hearing or any of the hearings by the commission, what you don't see is the darkness and perverse racism. Just because they don't talk about it doesn't mean it is not happening. There are no African-Americans on the board, and current board is too comfortable with status quo. They've even forgotten why they were elected, or they were elected to ignore the bigotry, xenophobia, and systemic and structural racism by people like Kevin Barton, Amberlyn Howell, and others in the DA's office. The staff in the Washington County Jail Classification Office, Sergeant Pete Mosler, Tamara Dahl, Erin Ferris, and others discriminate against black individuals housed in the jail. Obviously, there are instances when those accused of a crime are actually innocent, and Sheriff, Sheriff Pat Garrett reports to the board. He is not being held accountable for the actions of his staff. I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Would any other members of our viewing audience on Zoom like to provide public comment on any counter-related topic for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. I'll then move on to board announcements, and as thus, next Tuesday, August twenty-second, will be the last set of board meetings we have for this month. Our work session will be an afternoon work session, starting at two P M., and our board meeting will be our monthly evening meeting, starting at six-thirty P M., right here in the Public Services Building Auditorium. There will be no board meetings on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth. And surprisingly quickly, we're into the month of September. After the Labor Day holiday, on Tuesday, September fifth, we'll have a work session that starts at nine, then pause to go to the Housing Authority Board of Directors Meeting, starting at ten, and then our board business meeting will start following the Housing Authority Board of Directors Meeting. On Tuesday, September twelfth, like today, we'll have our work session, starting at nine, pause that, reconvene after our board meeting, which starts at ten, ends likely around one-thirty, we'll pick back up. On Tuesday, no, Thursday, September fourteenth, we'll have an afternoon board roundtable, starting at one P M., held off-site at a Clean Water Services facility in Durham. Then that evening, we have a joint event with our Clean Water Services Advisory Committee, starting at five P M. over at Cook Park. So thank you very much, everyone, and are there any other board announcements for today? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn today's Board of Commissioners meeting of Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And at this juncture, I would like to ask for us to move to our work session room, and at eleven-thirty, convene in executive session pursuant to O R S one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero, sub-two, sub-E, for the purposes of property negotiations. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero, and all those who, by Oregon statute, are allowed to attend this Clean Water Services Board of Directors Executive Session, will see you at eleven-thirty. Thank you.